They're good.
Okay, I'd like to start off by saying this meeting will be recorded and posted to the township video website. You can submit public comment by email to G Lippincott at West Rock Hill Township dot org. We will take public comment until the end of the meeting and we will read the public comment prior to any vote at the end of the meeting depending on what is appropriate. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order for September twenty first, two thousand and twenty two for the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors. I'd like to start off by pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is public comments on the agenda items. If you have any, please state your name and address. I don't see any on my screen. Greg, do you see any?
No.
Okay. Announcements. I'd like to make one announcement, well, a couple announcements. First announcement is we will be holding an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss some personnel and some legal matters. The second announcement I would like to make is the news that was given to me on Friday of the passing of Bob Keeler. For many of you know, Bob Keeler was the newspaper reporter for the News Herald for many, many years, probably as long as I can remember. And Bob has given a lot of coverage to West Rock Hill Township. Most of it very good, some not as great. But all input and all coverage is welcomed. And I want to thank Bob and his family personally, and I also share, I believe, my, my sedentist as far as the other two supervisors and the whole entire township bill. Absolutely. I'd like, yes, thank you, David. I'd like to thank Bob and his family for their, for their coverage and their time. I especially remember the spring fishing derby that Bob had devoted a lot of time to. And actually, I think it was on the front page of the News Herald. So thank you and may God rest in peace, Bob. Moving forward, the consent agenda. August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty two, meeting minutes, wind plan review status, emergency services, building and zoning permit report, public works, conservation committee, planning commission, treasury report. I would like to ask Mr. Lippincott to read the treasury report, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The general fund has one million, two hundred and sixty seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty nine dollars and seventy three cents. Highway aid, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. Open space, one million, uh, one, one million, three hundred thousand, eighty seven dollars, five ninety two and sixty five. The park fund, thirty six thousand, nine hundred and ninety one dollars and seventy cents. The equipment fund, nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty four dollars and sixty three cents. Highway capital, one hundred and thirty dollars and forty five cents. The street light, thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars and nineteen cents. The general fund reserve, four hundred and twenty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty nine dollars and fourteen cents. The American Rescue Plan, two hundred and seventy five thousand, one hundred and eighty three dollars and seventy one cents. The open space Manderfield, forty one thousand, four hundred and thirty eight dollars and seventy four cents. Sewage maintenance fund, one hundred and eighty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars and forty six cents. The stormwater fund, ten thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy nine dollars and thirty two cents. And the escrow funds, two million, three hundred and fifty eight dollars, seven hundred and forty four dollars and five cents.
Thank you. I do want to make one correction, at least the way I heard it, the open space there. What I have on my screen is one million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, five hundred and sixty two and sixty five cents. Do you read that too?
I have five, five hundred and ninety two and sixty five.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Because I only heard three hundred thousand. I didn't hear the eighty seven, three hundred and eighty seven thousand. That's okay. I just wanted to make that sure that it was clarified for the, for the video.
Okay.
Okay. With that being said, I would be looking for a
So you're calling Wood.
Okay, we have a motion made.
And seconded, Hal Sherman.
Seconded by Mr. Sherman. Thank you both. All of those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is confirmed appointments. I don't see any on here. So we will move forward into the next committee reports. Park and Rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
All right, Park and Rec time. All right, so this is the biggest event of our year for the Park and Rec. We have September Fest coming this Sunday from twelve o'clock to five P M. At James Memorial Park, we have a lot of events on the agenda. We have a great silent auction with probably twenty different items in the auction. We have probably twenty five different sponsors. We have a great load of attractions that we have coming to petty training, Irish dancers, music by Christine and Company. We have, let's see, Petty's Train, I said that, vendors. We have them along the walkway. We have the Historical Society is going to be there. We have the petting zoo again. We have T and I Puppy Club that's going to be there, Compassionate Friends, Rainbow and Clown, Rainbow the Clown, make it balloons, which is pretty cool. Pony rides, fire trucks, a lot of great, oh, root beer floats. You can't miss the root beer floats. We have a raffle for a wine basket, a lot of great items on the list. We have two food trucks going to be there. Oink Johnson and Scratch Kitchen Fries. So it's, we're looking, I just looked at the weather. It should be seventy four degrees, crossing our fingers, crossing our toes and everything. It's going to be a beautiful day again. So September Fest is going to be, you know, a fabulous day. So come one, come all, bring everybody and enjoy the day. So that is all I have today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rice?
I have no questions. I just wish you the best of luck. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I think that'll be great.
Yep. No questions, but as usual, always want to thank our fire companies, Trumbausville, Tyler Sport, Kelford, Sowasville, who are going to be coming out. Hopefully we'll get some of the antique engines coming out as well. So always nice to thank the guys for working along with the fire, along with the fire police who have to control traffic on Ridge Road. But we all look to see everybody there.
Yeah, thank you. I will, I will add that the Historical Society will be having the house open for, for tours, I believe. So make sure that everyone can spend a little time over there if you wish to see that. Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Park and Rec report. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the report, commission reports is Penridge Regional Police, Chief Dickinson. How are you?
Good, I'm doing good. Good evening, everybody. I have the August twenty twenty two activity report. In the month of August, we responded, the police department responded to six hundred and sixty four calls for service. Three, two hundred and ninety three of those calls for service were in East Rock Hill Township and the remaining three seventy one were in West Rock Hill Township. We handled twenty one traffic crashes. Of those crashes, ten were reportable crashes and eleven were non-reportable crashes. Thirteen were occurring in East Rock Hill and the remaining eight were in West Rock Hill Township. Our officers responded to twelve part one crimes and twenty nine part two crimes totaling forty one crimes for the month of August as well. Our reported crimes for August, East Rock Hill Township, we had one burglary, five theft reports, one arson, one criminal mischief, one weapons offense, one drug charge, one harassment, one disturbance, another harassment. So we had two harassments and ordinance violations in East Rock Hill Township were two dog law violations, one fireworks complaint and one nuisance law violation. West Rock Hill Township crimes, we had one burglary, we had five theft reports, we had an incident of a bomb, three fraud reports, two criminal mischief reports, five harassments, two disorderly conducts, three trespass complaints, one recklessly endangering another person. We have three ordinance violations, one dumping complaint, one dog complaint and one nuisance complaint. Criminal charges filed in the month of August, one charge of drug possession, one charge of drug paraphernalia, one theft arrest, three charges of receiving stolen property, one charge of loitering and prowling at night, two charges of theft of a firearm, two charges of possession of a firearm by a minor, another two charges possession of a firearm without a license, and then one dog law violation citation was issued for fourteen criminal charges filed in the month of August. Other police activities in August, we had a hundred and fifty five traffic enforcement details, twenty traffic citations were issued, twenty six traffic warnings were issued. We conducted four school checks, ninety seven park checks, five foot patrols and seventy six hours of training. So twenty twenty two, so far, we've responded to five thousand, nine hundred and forty six calls for service, a hundred and ninety two traffic accidents, three hundred and six criminal offenses. A hundred and thirty three criminal charges have been filed and our officers have attended nine hundred and seventy four hours of training so far for twenty twenty two. And I have, that would be the crux of your August twenty twenty two activity report.
Okay, you had a busy month.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Yep. All right, thank you, Chief. Is there any questions from Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Sherman?
Nope, reviewed the report, no questions.
I have none other than the motion to accept the police report as presented.
Okay, we have a motion made.
I'll second.
Second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your work.
You're welcome. No problem. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda for the commission reports are the Joint Rec Authority, Jan Dietz.
And actually, Jan and Kevin are out of the area, so I will be giving the quick summary for Holiday House Joint Rec Authority. We met at the beginning of September and we have, we're in the process now of rebidding a bunch of our contracts, reviewing and going through all of our contracts, both termite contract, which we were paying and weren't getting much for. We had about twelve thousand, thirteen thousand in lawn mowing expenses, which we're looking to rebid. We actually now have two members of the board who are volunteering their time to finish out the mowing season after we decided to discontinue our contract with the mowing contractor. We are just about out of funds and we are actively working on figuring out how we're going to be funding the park come next year. That includes working with Penridge School District, which has shown some interest in creating a baseball field. We have, we have an existing site that was laid out as a baseball field but never fully developed. It's simply a sandlot now. We've been looking at, initially, we're looking at, can we put the water tower over here? That's actually moved over to West Rock Hill Elementary. We've retaken control of the email accounts of the accounts for the Nest webcams, getting the webcams back up and running, getting the electric figured out and putting together a plan to figure out how we reopen and what else we have to add, if anything, to get the Holiday House up, running and running at a profit next year because this year essentially cleaned out all of our, actually last year essentially cleaned out all of our reserves. So this year we had little to nothing to actually start operations with. So we're going to be reaching out and we're in the process of getting an update for our ten year old long-term plan, which ten years ago we needed at least several hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs, upgrades and basic maintenance, which hasn't gone away. So we are pretty much putting our noses to the grindstone and making sure that we get everything in order to figure out how we get the property up and running and make it useful come next year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collingwood, you have any questions for?
Just one quick one. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. It may be premature. I just wonder, you say you're putting together a plan. Do you have any idea of when you might be reselling that in part or in whole?
Well, right now, well, sorry. Now, we, the, one of our members who was Sowasville Borough Councilman has put together, you know, took the time and put together a plan for D C N R for a grant for a strategic plan to update the ten year old plan because when you're going for grants, when you're going for money, people will ask how, you know, when was the last time you actually looked at what you most importantly need? Aside, we have a couple of things, like we have a couple of pipes in the pump room, which are obviously starting to leak and drips. Like, yeah, we need to replace these before they break because if they break with the current lead time for getting things repaired, we would be out for a couple of weeks. So we're looking at that. Our main problem is that the Joint Recreation Authority is a separate legal entity from the township, from the borough. And the only income that the Joint Rec Authority has comes from, is the income that comes from people buying tickets and subscriptions. And what we found out this year is, yes, the most important thing is getting lifeguards because if you don't have enough lifeguards, you're not going to open, you're not going to make any money and you're just going to be running your system. Basically, you're going to be running through your basic costs for electric insurance, water, sewer, the other requirements, the water treatment and the other things. And we think that we can get that plan together hopefully by early spring if we get the funding for it. So we have, and if not, then we're just going to go through line by line for the plan from ten, fifteen years ago and update the things that have changed and haven't changed, but for the most part, nothing has been substantially improved from ten, fifteen years ago. We may just have to update the numbers using the ten year old plan, updating it to current numbers. If we don't get a grant in order to actually go through and do a line by line, this is what we need for upgrades to the motors, to the piping, to the roof, to the T one eleven sheathing, to the parking lot and everything else.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sherman. I'll make a motion that we accept the Joint Rec Authority report as presented. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, next on the agenda is the tax collector's report. Suzanne is not here. Mr. Lippincott, will you read that?
Sure. In your packets is the report for last month, three hundred and fifty six dollars was collected.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. I'll make a motion. We accept the report as presented. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Next on our agenda is the engineer's report, Mr. Steve Balla.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item we had on the, on the report is the Green Top Road subdivision. The Salapio Homes project, I believe we have some representatives here tonight. Steve Lampman from Salapio Homes. Steve, do you have anybody else here?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So this subdivision was recommended for conditional final approval by the Planning Commission back in July and they are just appearing tonight to discuss the plan. Would you like to give me the brief overview, Steve, of the project?
Certainly. This is a beautiful location on Green Top and Catch Basin Roads, divided into the seven properties. And quite a bit of the existing vegetation will be preserved. The, I had had discussion with the adjacent property owner where an easement is required on the bottom right of the property adjacent to, across from Lot Seven. And they seem to be amenable. I shared the emails, communication with Mr. Lippincott and yourself, Steve, and we'll be swift to put that together. We very much look forward to working with the township to execute this community.
Okay, so we have a, the review letter was from June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Did you have any issue with any of the items that were contained in that, Steve?
No.
No. So if the, if the board has any questions, this would be the time or you could direct the solicitor to prepare the final plan approval resolution.
Steve, I do see, I was going to say, hold on a second. I see a hand raised. I believe it's Alex from the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
It's Alex Hughes, but for his mic isn't muted. He might want to try the phone number to call in.
Yeah. Okay, I thought that was Alex from the Planning Mission. Anyhow, either, either supervisor have any questions regarding this, this plan? We've seen this a couple of times now, I believe.
David Collingwood, I've been to all the Planning Commission meetings where this has been discussed. I have no question.
Okay.
This is how similar I've been, I've listened to all of the Planning Commission meetings where this was discussed, hashed out, thrashed out and figured out. So no questions.
Okay. Steve, you're looking for us to do?
Just authorize the solicitor to prepare the final plan approval resolution for consideration next month.
I think we ought to wait for the young man to come back in.
He's, I see him dialing the number.
Okay, very good.
So he's just about ready to come in. There he is.
Alex. You're muted, Alex.
Yeah, I don't know why I can't hear him on the phone either.
Well, he can hear us because he took your suggestion. Alex, you can write your question in the, in the note.
Or you can email.
Can, can you hear me now? I'm sorry, I'm here with the Crossroads Group. I don't know why you couldn't hear me earlier. So I was just going to say I could help answer any questions, but it doesn't seem like there are any. So sorry for holding this up.
Okay, thank you. Yep. All right. With that said, I'll entertain someone to make a motion.
I'll make that motion, David Collingwood.
And that's to direct me to prepare a resolution for final plan approval?
That is, that is correct. Thank you.
And I will second the motion to start plan approval.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I just have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the Moser Construction Subdivision. We talked about that last month. Two lot subdivision on Augustine Road. I think we boiled it down to a couple issues remaining. I believe that one of the main items was addressing stormwater runoff that came off of the adjoining Landis property, I believe his name is. In between last month and now, I received a revised plan from the design engineer that proposed the swale on the Moser property, which would redirect that water towards the rear. Remember, we had a discussion of historically, there was a swale on the Landis side of the property that had been breached. The water came across the Moser property and then ultimately onto the Lighty property. And there was a question of how were we going to reestablish that swale, whether it be on the Landis property or the Moser property? Well, they're proposing to reestablish it on the Moser property. The concept they, they submitted was reasonable to me. We're just working out some issues with the actual design flows, the stormwater calculations for it. So that, that was my summary. I believe Ed Moser is on the call and maybe his engineer, Rachel Butch, also, if they have anything else to add.
Mike Carr also here on behalf of Ed Moser. I would encourage Rachel to describe the changes between last month and this month. How they addressed the issue that you just referred to.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So like, like Steve just kind of explained, what we've, what we've done since the last meeting is designed, actually designed a swale to convey the water that comes out of the pipe off of the Landis property through the, onto the Moser property and then down along the property line and then it, it discharges and meets into a swell that's already there, an existing swell already on the Moser property. And this is all happens downstream of the, of the proposed rain garden. So like Steve said, we, we did, you know, prepared a drainage area analysis, did some swell calc, some erosion control calc and submitted to Steve. And we're just, you know, working out the, the specifics of that, but I believe we, you know, have a design that, that works and it meets the intent of, of what we discussed last week and addresses what, you know, what the concerns were.
And otherwise, and otherwise the plans are in conformity with subdivision and land development ordinance, I presume.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe that was the, the major issue in addition to just the final language of the preservation easement on the, on the property.
And I'm confident that Mary and I can address that.
Agreed, Mike.
To her satisfaction, yeah.
I did, I did forward a copy of the revised plan to Luke Mast, who was working with the Lightys, when I received it a week or so ago. I did not have the chance to speak to him or hear anything back, but I did try to pass that along so they were aware of what the plan revision proposed.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I don't have any questions if that issue is addressed. Do either of my two fellow supervisors have any additional questions or does that satisfactory to what was presented here tonight?
Really don't have any other questions. I do remember that that had been a problem. I remember it blowing out in, right after Hurricane Floyd when we had a torrent going down Augustine Road, which wiped out the side of three oh nine bypass. I know that the Perkham and Bursheh Conservancy was looking at infiltration along that hill decades ago, but never actually got around to working on it. But as long as the two neighbors are okay with this, I see no reason to question whether it'll work.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I, yeah, I, I heard Steve say something about working out issues and Rachel talking about working out specifics. Assuming that that gets done and that the final language is, is worked out and the Lightys are on board, if all those can come together, then I'm, I'm also okay.
Very good. Thank you.
I, I, I see this listed as preliminary. I, I think we've worked long and hard enough that we could probably approve this as final at this point. If Mary agrees.
You're muted, Mary.
On a Mary call, that's a Steven board call.
Yeah. I, I, from my perspective, I want to make sure that Steve is satisfied and from what I heard Rachel say, that, that does satisfy that, but I want to hear from Steve if, if it's satisfactory. I do think he did say he was satisfactory with that. So Steve, is there any other issue other than the language that needs to be worked out with Mary and Mike?
No, no, I, I just need to work out the final details with, with the design engineer, but the concept there is, is acceptable. And but, and just to note, the Planning Commission recommendation was for a preliminary final approval.
Okay. All right, so from my perspective, if, if those things are met and the language is worked out, conditional, I will make a motion to approve conditional preliminary final approval on this plan, so long as everything is met to the satisfactory of Mary and, and Steve.
Aren't we just authorizing Mary to prepare the resolution?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, Mike and I will work through the preservation language after you grant conditional approval, whether it be preliminary or final. That is, that's one of the documents along with development agreements and things like that that we'll work through at that time. So we're not going to have the preservation document at the same time we have the resolution, but it will be a condition of final plan approval.
And that's acceptable.
Thank you. That was my concern, that all those things come together eventually. And with that said, I would second Mr. Kaiser's motion.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, motions are made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just taking notes down there. Take a shot. Move on to the next item. Oakwood Terrace THP sewage facilities planning module. So Oakwood Terrace was, is, you know, the THP project, just below Grandview Hospital off of Juan Avenue and the private road. So, and we've already granted final approval. This is just approval of their sewage facilities planning module. I believe the resolution is in your packet. It's public sewer. It'll be served by Sellersville Borough. So you're just acknowledging that it's in your public sewer service area and you agree that the site will be served by Sellersville Borough.
Okay.
But we have to do it by resolution. So whatever the next resolution number is, is what we would need to adopt.
Okay. Mary, you have that number, resolution number? Are you, wouldn't you be great to get that?
It's 2207.
2207. All right. I'll entertain a motion for resolution 2207 regarding the Oakwood Terrace Sewage Facilities Planning Module approval.
So moved.
All right. Motion's been made.
Seconded, David.
Seconded. All right, David, thank you. Seconded by David. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, excuse me.
Yep. Good enough.
Yes, that is perfect. So that is all I have under my report, although I might be talking under Mary's report. But that's all I have for the moment.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the engineer's report.
I'll move David Collingwood.
All right, motion's been made.
And seconded, Hal Shermer.
Seconded by Mr. Shermer. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the solicitor's report. Mary Everly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, you, you looked at a language for a stormwater management ordinance revision. The state updated language that it wanted to see in every stormwater management ordinance. So every municipality is doing this. While he, when he started breaking it down and putting it into an ordinance form, Steve found that there were a lot of other little things in the stormwater ordinance that he wanted to change. So you went through those last month and, and it's basically a full restatement of your stormwater ordinance to capture the things the state wanted us to change, which were mostly procedural kind of permit issues, not necessarily substantive issues, and then some things Steve wanted to change as well. The ordinance has been advertised and is before you tonight for a public hearing. So you would, after asking the board if they have questions, you would ask if there's any public comments.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do either of my two fellow supervisors have any questions or concerns regarding the stormwater ordinance number 245?
No real concerns. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that this is not the Philadelphia style stormwater tax. This is simply saying this is what you have to do as you develop new land.
Yep, thank you.
I have none. I think we, we saw quite a few extensive edits at the, at the last meeting and we've had time to review it on two occasions. So I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, then I will open up this hearing for any public comment on the stormwater ordinance number 245. Anybody have any comment or questions regarding it? I don't see any on my screen. Greg, you see any?
None on mine either.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then if there's no public comment, then I will close this, this hearing and I will ask to move forward on this stormwater ordinance number 245.
So moved.
Okay, a motion's been made by Mr. Shermer.
Seconded, David Collingwood.
Seconded by Mr. Collingwood. Thank you, gentlemen. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Stormwater ordinance number 245 passes.
And that is the only item I have under, under the solicitor's report. We're making up for last month.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mary. All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the solicitor's report.
I'll move to approve the solicitor's report.
I'll second it, Collingwood.
Thank you, Mr. Collingwood. Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the manager's report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the snow removal bid awards. The only, we only had one bid. It was from affluent retrieval services. They snow plowed for us last year. The bid rate for a four wheel drive truck is $175 an hour. And for a six wheel truck, it's $185 an hour. I would recommend that you approve the bid for affluent retrieval services, Inc.
Okay. Any questions regarding that before we approve it?
I have none. It's good that they, they worked for us last year, were approved last year that we use them next year.
Okay.
Uh, just one question. How many people did we try to solicit for this?
We went out to bid on Penn Bid. So it was open to anyone in the state to bid.
And just one. Okay.
We received one bid.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we go with the, the applicant that has applied. Greg, can you report the name again, please?
Affluent Retrieval.
Yep, affluent retrieval. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Greg.
All right. The next item is the 2023 MMO. Every year I must report to the Board of Supervisors what the estimated MMO will be. And for 2023, it will be $62,061. You do not have to take any action. You don't have to approve it. It just must be reported in the minutes that it was, that number was given to you.
Thank you.
Done.
The next item is the PRA grant letter for Tabor Road. PRA is going for a grant. What they'd like to do is get the board's authorization and also need the planning commission's authorization for a, a letter of approval for this. They're going for a Penn Vest grant because of the PFAS contamination up off Tabor Road and Old Buffon Pike. It affects 50 to 60 homes. Alls they need from West Rockville Township is a letter saying that they support the grant. Obviously, we got this right at the end of the day on Friday, so I added it to the agenda. What I would look for is authorization for the Board of Supervisors for me to craft a letter that you would sign later this week and then give to PRA.
Okay. Any, any concern regarding that? Or do you both, both my fellow supervisors agree?
Well, I know this has been a major concern for the
You froze up, Hal. I will say it has
And it's, yep, and it's good to see some movement towards fixing this.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Collingwood, any concern?
I agree. It's, it's, I don't think it's something we can't do, cannot do. We have to do this. So I'm on board.
Okay. I'll make a motion if we have to, to authorize the township manager to draft a letter.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Very. Okay, you got it, Greg.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the manager's report.
So moved, David Collingwood.
That motion's been made. I'll second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Next on the agenda is old business. That was an old business item that we were just talking about Tabor Road. We've been looking and trying to figure out how to get public water up there. So hopefully this is a start. If this doesn't come through, I think we need to still look at making that happen somehow in the future. Either of you two have any old business?
I have no old business, David Collingwood.
Again, no old business, Hal.
Thank you. Any new business?
I have none, David Collingwood.
And Hal, none.
Okay, I have none as well. Moving forward to public comment. Please state your name and address. Greg, you see any?
I see none.
Okay.
Oh, there's one, Tony.
Oh, yeah. Okay, Anthony.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The Stormwater Ordinance 245, where was that advertised at?
It was, it was advertised in the news, Harold.
But not on the township website? Because I didn't, I didn't see it on there unless I couldn't find it.
It was on the township website as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other public, oh, here we got one. I'm sorry.
It's Chris Link. Make sure you give your name and address, Chris.
Hi, this is, this is Chris Link, 119 West Branch Road. I just would be curious to find out whether or not these meetings are going to be made in public anytime soon.
We're working on it. This is, this is public comment. So thank you for your comment. Duly noted, Greg. Okay. Any other public comment? Anthony.
I'm sorry. I didn't give my address. 2920 Clymer Avenue. I'd like to make a comment too about the in-person meeting. I know that you don't have to make a comment, but I'd like for the board to consider that. You know, we're, you know, as if the government, if you believe Biden, he says that we're over the pandemic. And I think the board should consider in-person meeting. And I think that it's, as I've always said, there's a lot of people that are excluded from the fact that they're not internet savvy and, and I think the township is excluding people from be able to, to participate in the meeting. And I know you don't have to comment. That's just my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any others, Greg.
No others.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would like to at least acknowledge that we have been looking at this, thinking about this. I have personally gone up to Milford Township, which does a mixed version so that people can drive in or they can participate. And, you know, we've got, I think we had like 33 people here, which is more than usually attend a regular township meeting. So trying to mix and match with online and in-person might be the best version, but it takes a little bit to set it up and the supervisors have been investigating it. We are listening.
Okay, seeing no other public comment. I will entertain a motion for adjournment into, adjournment into executive session.
So moved, David Collingwood.
And seconded, Hal.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for attending. Thank you all for input. See you Sunday.